So I'd like everybody to stand, please. And Commissioner Gonzalez, will you give us a say prayer for us?
Sure. Heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon, first of all, giving you thanks. Can you give me a thank all the blessings that we have received from you and are receiving from you on a daily basis? We thank you for the opportunity to conduct business in a, in a, in a safe, working and open environment. Lord, we ask you, God, when you give us the knowledge and the wisdom as we should take this step forward and conduct meetings, conduct the business from this meeting in the best interest of San Juan County.
Amen. Commissioner Lanier, will you lead us in pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Before we get started, I just wanted to say congratulations to Commissioner Gonzalez and Lanier for being part of this now on the commission and also our clerk, Melissa Kuhn, congratulations. And I didn't know if Carol Talby, our treasurer, was here. I want to say congratulations to her, too. So anyway, it's a pleasure for everybody to be here. So I'm going to go ahead and move on to the fourth part of our agenda. Okay. So I'm now going to accept nominations for the chair of the commission. Are there any nominations?
Commissioner Fortner?
Yes.
If I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Terry Fortner as the chair for the county commission.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I, I have a nomination for chair. Do I have any other nominations?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate myself.
Okay.
In 2007, I was 55 years old when I first got on the commission, and I've never been chair. But I know that we went through a suit and the question was, how come you were never chair? But anyway, I just wanted to go on the record.
Okay, thank you. So I have two. Are there any other, other nominations?
No.
Okay, if there's no more nominations for chair, we will close nominations and proceed to elect the chair. The nominees are Commissioner Fortner, Commissioner Totachini. So I will now take a motion to elect Commissioner Fortner as chair. Take a motion. Okay, do I have a second?
Aye.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we have a majority, so we have three. Do I need to take a roll call?
I think, Madam, Commissioner Fortner, yes, I think you should take a roll call vote.
And I probably need to get nays also. So, okay.
So we should probably just start down the line with Commissioner McDaniel and G.I.A.'s.
Aye for Fortner.
Okay.
Nay.
Aye.
Okay, aye?
Aye.
Okay, so then motion carries for Fortner for chair. So at this time with the nomination, do I need to do another?
Well, Commissioner Fortner, I don't believe you do because I think the result is, is in with that.
Okay. All right, so thank you and thank you, Commissioner Totachini, for your interest because I appreciate you and I know you work hard on this board, so thank you. All right, so now that we have the chair elected, the next order of business is to elect the chair pro temp. Do I have any nominations?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Totachini for chairman pro temp for the year 2025.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Sam Gonzalez for.
Do I have any other nominations? All right, hearing none, then I will go with those in favor of Commissioner Totachini as chair pro temp. I'll go down the line with.
Aye for Totachini.
Aye for Totachini.
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Okay, so it does not carry, so we'll go on to Commissioner Gonzalez for chair pro temp and I'll start down with Commissioner McDaniel for your vote.
I'll vote, uh, nay.
Okay, Commissioner Totachini.
Oh, say that again.
Are you for or against Commissioner Gonzalez for being chair pro temp?
Even though we voted.
Yes, now we're on to the second. The other didn't carry.
Nay.
Okay, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yay.
Okay, yay?
Yay.
Okay, so at this time, motion carries and congratulations, Commissioner Gonzalez for.
Madam Chair, did we record your vote in that roll call?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so at this time, that closes our election and we'll move on. And again, I want to say I appreciate the work that we do as, on the commission. In the past, we worked on policy that we agreed and disagreed. However, we came to consensus on the best policy for our communities. As elected policymakers, we have ideals that are representative of the policy that we create here. As we continue to work together as a commission on policy, our leadership represents our communities who elected us. Thank you for expressing your opinions today. That's what has been, made our county great because of the diversity of opinions that we share here to serve the people in our community. So thank you, commissioners. All right, so now I need a motion to go into the Board of Finance.
Motion to go into Board of Finance?
Any a second?
No second.
Okay. Hello, Ms. Talby.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman and members of the commission. We just have a little bit of first of the year housekeeping. In order for my office to invest, the local government investment pool, we have to do a resolution at the beginning of each year. So I am requesting that you approve Resolution Number 242545, authorizing investment of monies in the local short-term investment fund. We have about, right now, we have about 12 million in that fund, but typically we carry between five and, five and eight million. So.
Thank you. So this is an action item, so you can ask questions now if you'd like to, Ms. Talby, or I'll take the motion. So if someone would like to move to accept?
Commissioner Fortner, I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution 242545 as presented.
Okay, I need a second?
No second.
Okay, I have first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, do I need a motion to go out of Board of Finance? Okay, I need a motion to go out of Board of Finance.
Motion to go out of, Board of Finance?
No second.
Yeah, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nay? Hearing none, motion carries. So now we're going to go down to the regular meeting and I need, are there any changes in the agenda?
Madam Chair, there are no changes for tonight's agenda. It's as presented.
Okay, so if there's no changes, I need to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda of January 7th, 2025.
Down a second?
No second.
Okay, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, so now we'll go into the consent agenda and I'll read off these. Number one is consideration of regular meeting minutes from December 3rd, 2024. Number two, consideration of FY25 budget adjustments. Number eight, Resolution Number 242549. Okay? With that, then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the two items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, so now we'll move on to the first action item. It's consideration of Resolution Number 242551, acceptance and approval of the FY25 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Hi, Ms. Martin.
Hello. Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. I come before you today to have Chris Garner with Patio Brown in Hill to present the results of our audit. At the end of his presentation, we will need to have an action item where you all accept the audit results. And the reason why we are doing this presentation is based on the 2024 New Mexico State Audit Rule that requires us, that requires the FY24 Act for be presented to the IPA by the IPA to the quorum of the county commission at a meeting held in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Furthermore, the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration requires the commission sign a resolution accepting the audit. So at the end of Chris's presentation, we will ask for your approval of that. And with that being said, I'll introduce Chris Garner. He's a partner with Patio Brown and Hill in our audit.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Commissioner, what I have here is some highlights. A couple of you were at the exit conference, I believe it was the end of November. That's a fuzzy time, that's a busy time for us, but we had that exit conference. So I just have some highlights. And what most of these slides are, are what we call required communication. Auditing standards want us to talk about certain items to those that are charged with governance, and here are the highlights from that. So with that, if we'll get started on the first page, the results of the audit. We issued what we call, what we call an unmodified opinion. To me, unmodified really doesn't give a very good explanation of what that is. That's exactly the type of report that the county wants to receive. And as you can see on this slide, I put clean opinion because, again, this is the highest level of assurance that we as auditors can give. So our opinion states that your financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with the standards that we have to follow as your auditors. And so, again, this is a good thing. On the next slide, we have two other reports in your audit that are our reports. The one on the left is what we call a Yellow Book report. So all audits in the state of New Mexico are required to follow the Yellow Book standards, and those are governmental auditing standards that are national standards that we have to follow. The whole reason that the state auditor requires us to do this is it requires us to test internal controls a little bit more than what regular auditing standards require. Audit rule also expands that to have us test certain things. There's like, I think there's 21 items that we potentially have to test, things like travel and per diem that they want us to look at, your procurement policies. So we have expanded testing. In our state also, we have a higher threshold. And so any findings that we come across, according to the Yellow Book standards, we have a threshold here we call significant deficiencies. We don't have that in New Mexico. Basically, it's at the ground level. We have any exceptions in our state, we are required to report those as findings. The whole reason is a state auditor wants transparency. They want, if we have issues, for them to be addressed and to dealt with, and so that those, like a commission, know about those findings. And as you can see on the left, we don't issue an opinion in this report. What we do is we spell out how we test internal controls above what regular auditing standards require, and then we, we talk about the results of our testing, as you can see here. Even with the expanded testing and the lower threshold, we did not have any exceptions. So what that tells the commission is, is your internal controls that have been established are working well. Not only finance, but the entire county has to follow because people have to go through the proper channels of getting things approved ahead of time. We see all the time where somebody wants to go make a purchase and they don't go through the proper procedures, but that's not the culture that the county has. So everybody throughout the whole county is a part of this no findings with the internal controls we have to test. On the right is another opinion that we do issue. This one relates to your federal grants. Because the county spends more than 750,000 of federal grant funds, we do what we call a single audit or compliance audit over those federal grants. We do issue an opinion. This one also is an unmodified opinion. So both opinions that we will be issuing, or that we did issue, since this is a public document now, aren't exactly the type of reports the county wants to receive. We go to the next slide. The whole reason for this communication is just to give the commission a feel of how are your financial records being maintained? If we as auditors come in and have issues and have problems, we're supposed to let you know, and as you can see here, we did not have any difficulties. As we asked for supporting documents, given to us timely, it was given to us in good order for us to complete the audit. Like I said earlier, we didn't have any exceptions to any of the documentation that we requested for testing. So because we do a Yellow Book audit and because we do that single audit I talked about, we actually have to pick lots of samples and look at lots of transactions, and we did not have any exceptions as we tested those. The next slide is talking about adjustments, and the whole reason auditing standards want us to talk about this is because if we come in as auditors and have to make lots of changes, then the commission might need to be a little bit skeptical on your financial numbers as you go through and make decisions throughout the year. But as you can see here, we did not have a single adjustment. And so the communication here is, is that you have a good set, a good infrastructure to properly account for the numbers and that you can feel confident in relying on the numbers that are presented to you as you make financial decisions throughout the year. We go to the next slide. As I mentioned earlier, findings, we did not have any, even with the extra samples that we had to test, we did not have any exceptions even at that lower, at that lower level. So this year, I think it's at least the third year in a row, it might be more than that, fourth year in a row with no findings. Of course, Mike would know, right?
That's his job.
The next slide is talking about how the county goes above and beyond really what you're required to do. We have what we call an act for. That's what this financial statement is. It's more, there's more information in here than what auditing standards require. You subject yourself to adding a lot of additional information, a lot of additional statistics. There's a lot of, of high-level information in here that you go after an award that not very many people in New Mexico give. So your financial statements actually have a lot more information than the state of New Mexico requires. If we go to the next slide, it talks about the results of that. So the county has received the award for 18 consecutive years. And as you can see, there's only 19 New Mexico governments in our entire state, and there's over 700 and something governments in New Mexico, and there's only 19 that go after this award. And so you are one of the few that gets it. You're one of five counties, the 33 counties to receive the award in 2023. And above just getting the award for excellence in your financial report, the county also goes after two other awards. You go after the PAFR, which is a small pamphlet. It's a popular annual financial report, which summarizes, the whole purpose in that is to have information to give to your constituents that's easier to read than going through this audit report. And so, again, that is not a requirement, it's something that you do above and beyond. And then you've also received the budget award. When you receive all three awards, we call that the triple crown, and there's only six New Mexico governments that get that triple crown. You know, there are a lot of other states that have a lot higher participation, but for some reason, New Mexico, we don't have a lot of people that go after this award because it does take extra work. You know, in our state, with a state auditor, we already have a lot of extra work that has to be done that other states don't require. And so I don't know if that's the reason that people don't do it, but for whatever reason, there's not a lot of participation. The county has received that award for 18 years. It is something that you should definitely be proud of. We go to the next section. I just am going to give some financial highlights. This first graph is the government-wide financial statement. So there are four pages in your audit report out of all these pages that are on this, what we call full accrual, where you have long-term assets showing up as assets, you have long-term liabilities showing up as liabilities. And as you can see here, you ended the year with 357 million in assets, 157 million of liabilities. The difference between those two is your, what we call net assets or net position, it's your equity in the county. So the county ended up with $200 million in equity on the full accrual basis of accounting. We go to the next slide. This is the general fund balance sheet, and I think this is more important because this is your operating fund. At the end of this year, you ended up with 55 million in assets, 8 million in liabilities, and $47 million of what we call fund balance. Again, that's your equity in the general fund. And I've got a few slides after this, kind of giving a little bit of the components. The next slide is, is your assets in the general fund. So the biggest, the lion's share of your assets is $38 million in cash and investments, 14 million in accounts receivable, and then prepaid's 2 million and inventory 1 million. So in this set of financial statements, it's almost like checkbook accounting. If I'm going to get it in my checkbook close enough after year end, it's an asset. If it's going to go out after, closely after year end, it's a liability. We don't have our bonds showing up in these particular sets of financial statements. We don't have your buildings and that type of stuff. So this is more kind of checkbook accounting. So at the end of the year, you ended up with about 55 million. Again, the biggest portion was the cash. Your assets decreased in total by 9 million, and the biggest part of that was your cash decreased by about $7 million since last year. Now, included in that $38 million is approximately $1 million of restricted cash. So there are restrictions on that $1 million, but the rest of it is unrestricted. The other large decrease related to your accounts receivable, and that's, it's kind of a tricky one. Last year, we had to implement, or maybe it was two years ago, we had to implement a new lease standard where long-term leases now are showing up on your, as an asset, but they're also showing up in essence as a liability on your financial statements. We call that a deferred inflow. It's, to me, it's not very good information, but it's something we have to do. So the decrease in your AR really only related to the paydowns in those leases that you received, and we'll see the same thing on the liabilities part. So if we go to the next slide, you ended up with $8 million in liabilities, and you'll see the biggest liability is that deferred leases. So we have to gross, we have to gross out the lease and then we offset it with this deferred liability. Again, it's standard accounting that somebody feels is important. I don't think it's very good information. But so your liabilities did remain fairly consistent, but the biggest decrease related to that liability that relates to your leases. Other than that, really, your liabilities in the general fund are pretty minimal. What are the last, I think, no, there's two more slides. The one on revenue. Your revenues actually decreased by 9 million, and the biggest part of that was, is last year, we had a big increase related to building an electrical permit fees that related to the solar project, and that did not repeat this year. And so they kind of came back down to the level of the prior year, so it would be 2022. So that's why we have the biggest decrease. Everything else really remained fairly consistent between the two years. We go to the last page, the expenses. Overall, your expenses really remain fairly consistent. You know, there's maybe a little bit of different buckets that things went in, but I think your, your expenses changed by half a million dollars. So it went from 55 and a half million to 55 million, so again, very consistent. With that, oh, one other thing is the treasurer was leaving. You know, she made a comment to me, and I think it's important that the county understands this because not every county is as fortunate as you are. Sometimes when you have elected officials in other departments like the treasurer, the clerk, the successor, they don't always work well with finance, and it's really critical to have these type of financial statements, these types of reports, if everybody works well together. And the county is truly blessed that all those different departments work well together to make sure that the reconciliations are being done well, that your internal controls are working well. And so, you know, the treasurer performs a very important function, one of, actually the largest county in, in our state. Years ago, I did their audit, and you had to make an appointment with the treasurer's office to even go talk to him. They would not give the reconciliations to the finance department without pulling teeth. And so it was a very unhealthy situation, and you, since my experience with the county, you guys have never experienced, and I think it's important that y'all know that all your departments, it's really critical they work together, and you're seeing the results of that in these types of reports. So with that, open up any questions.
Good, thank you. Anybody have questions or comments? I just, I'm going back to the page where it talks about achievement for excellence and just thinking about 18 consecutive years, that's, that's a long time.
It's a long time.
And I appreciate Ms. Martin and her whole team and all the rest of the staff that gives her the information to be able to do this. It's a, it's a big job, and, and to think that we're one of 19 governmental entities received the award in 2023. So, and then with the triple crown, that's a lot. That's a, that's a high bar.
Yes.
So anyway, thank you for giving us this information.
Sure.
And if there's not any other comments or questions, I'll need a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I know that finance has to provide a lot of documents in working with the auditor, and it looks like they did a really good job. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-25-51, acceptance and approval of the fiscal year 24 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Are there any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next, we have Daniel Yohi. It's an overview of the Geographical Information System Program at San Juan County. Hello.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Daniel Yohi, and I'm the GIS manager here at San Juan County. I'm honored today to be introducing myself to the new 25, 2025 commission and providing an overview of the San Juan County GIS division and associated programs. I am joined today by three individuals from ESRI, one of the global leaders in GIS and the makers of our most used software. The ESRI account team is here on site to provide support and knowledge while visiting with departments to understand business needs and set strategic goals related to GIS. Thank you to Tim Triplett, Kendall Ryan, and Joseph Peters for joining us today. So jump into it. What is GIS? Most people know GIS as a mapping tool, and I hope to show you over the course of this brief presentation that is so much more than just a mapping tool. It's a technology that is used to create, manage, analyze, and map data, as well as the science that allows us to understand patterns, relationships, and geographic context. By connecting data to a map, we integrate location data, so where things are with these kind of descriptive elements, descriptive information. kind of descriptive elements, descriptive information about what the things are like there. This large set of tools allows for improved communication and visualizations, better efficiency, and data management across various industries and departments here at San Juan County. I often like to explain GIS to non-GIS users as a process similar to baking. A baker takes raw ingredients, combines them together with various methodologies such as stirring, sifting, folding, bakes them at a high temperature, and is left with a finished product that is enjoyable and digestible by many. One of the earliest uses of GIS was John Snow's mapping of cholera cases around London's Broad Street in the eighteen fifties. It's pictured here in this slide on the left. He mapped the frequency and location of cholera cases and was able to identify specific water sources that were contaminated with cholera. This combining of data or layers in a map and then using analysis to understand trends in the data is the same foundation that we use for GIS today. A bit about the history of our GIS program here at San Juan County. It originated in the Fire Operations Center in the late nineteen nineties, transitioning over to the Information Systems Department in the early two thousands. As one of the trailblazers in addressing in New Mexico, the need for GIS arose from the need to capture and manage address and road data in order to provide residents with accurate and reliable emergency services. With the unique decentralized structure where GIS users benefit many departments across the county, this history of GIS is ingrained in many different workflows. These days, the GIS Division provides quality data on a stable mapping platform that supports users of different skill levels, engaging both internal users and members of the public. While I'm making the case that GIS is so much more than mapping, it is important to highlight that that is one of the main services provided here at San Juan County. A few options are kind of pictured here in this slide, as well as the next slide, as well as behind you, that many of us look at every commission meeting here. We take mapping requests from members of the community and San Juan County employees to provide clear, concise, and descriptive maps. I think that's pretty self-explanatory for a GIS department. Going beyond that, the San Juan County GIS Division coordinates imagery product projects for the county, providing imagery to county staff as well as our citizens through web maps and services. Imagery products have been a regular aspect of the program since the early two thousands. With the expert services of Eagle View pictometry, we are currently conducting the first full county flyover since two thousand nine, providing our community and organization with high-quality imagery products. Over the past month and a half, you may have noticed somewhat low flying planes across the county. This captures nearing completion and is currently at eighty-seven percent of high elevation areas and eighty-five percent of low elevation areas. We are capturing imagery at this time to take advantage of the short window after the leaves fall, but before the snow settles in, which this year I think we've been pretty fortunate with. The timing's pretty good. This imagery is very beneficial to the assessor's office and is used frequently to appraise property. This data is also to be used in future studies related to the proposed freight rail line. As part of the products available from ESRI, the GIS Division manages a portal for maps and spatial data called the San Juan County GeoHub. From here, members of the public can download data, view web maps, story maps, and other mapping applications. Data available for download includes parcels, boundaries, roads, addresses, and more. The GeoHub received twenty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-one page views in the past year and close to six hundred thousand since its creation in two thousand twelve. That, if you'll go back real quick, Devin, that is a picture of the GeoHub in this slide. This is linked through the county website, and you can also get there through the URL sjcounty.net/maps, and it'll take you directly there. I hope in the future that I can explain these products in a little more detail, but just kind of providing a brief overview today. Since the introduction of ArcGIS Online in two thousand twelve, GIS has quickly shifted focus to mapping through the internet. Once limited to only users who had the training and funding for hefty desktop software, GIS is now available through many web-based services. One of our most heavily-visited web applications is the Assessor's Parcel Map. This application has received a total of sixty-two thousand four hundred and fifty views and is a valuable resource to many across San Juan County, including realtors, surveyors, and landowners. On our GeoHub, we also have two story maps available to view, telling the story for one of the Cleanup San Juan mobile application and associated project, as well as paddle trails along the Animus River here in San Juan County. The mobile-based application, Cleanup San Juan County, allows community members to report trash dump sites to the county's solid waste division for an easy, with an easy-to-use survey form. That data is then reviewed by solid waste and marked for cleanup if it falls onto public lands. All of these applications allow users of every level to connect with authoritative data that is managed and visualized by the GIS office. A few screenshots included here of the Cleanup San Juan app. This is another topic that I look forward to connecting with you all as we are redeveloping this app and a new software, trying to kind of keep the existing form as much as possible, but potentially adding some extra features that would be appropriate for an application like this. The GIS office also manages the county's, sorry, skipped ahead a little bit there. Not everything the GIS Division does is as publicly visible as the previously mentioned examples. The GIS office partakes in the yearly U.S. Census Bureau's Boundary and Annexation Survey, ensuring that the Census Bureau has current and accurate legal boundaries in census-designated places. Correct boundaries ensure governments receive funds appropriately and have the best data available for their decision-making processes. The GIS office also manages the county's collection of spatial data for accuracy, quality, and integrity, ensuring that this data can be used and interpreted for many years to come through San Juan County. While I've spent the majority of this presentation focused on what GIS is and what this program currently provides, I think it is important to end with a brief overview of where I see this division going with the commission's guidance and approval. The current vision includes taking advantage of a robust, tested system to bring San Juan County to the forefront of geospatial applications and technologies through external engagement, regular enrichment opportunities, and a focus on systems, allowing for better decision-making, efficiency, and organizational collaboration. Okay, be honest, where did I lose y'all in that statement? Robust system. Let me explain with a little bit less terminology. So taking advantage of the existing technology and infrastructure, we can grow it per the needs of San Juan County departments and citizens. Fortunately, a very solid foundation has been laid over the past decades. I hope to build and maintain a stronger, more resilient system, implementing architectures such as workload separation to ensure GIS users are viewing their data with little delay. In the past, this sort of system planning has been left up to the experts and professionals at ESRI, but I have dug into system architecture and am taking this planning and development process into our own hands. A stronger system will allow us to take on future projects, future exciting projects such as 3D mapping, large-scale analysis, emergency preparedness planning, citizen engagement tools, or any other topics that the commission has interest in. As I mentioned earlier, GIS is not just for the experts. With the development of powerful mapping portals, maps and data are now just a click away for anyone interested in using public data and applications. You can set up a free account with ArcGIS Online. Applications are increasingly easy to use, connecting members of the public with authoritative data, possibly for future research and projects. I would like to create applications that are even more user-friendly and informative. I plan to make these applications as user-friendly as possible by providing information sessions on new applications and including directions and frequently asked questions for existing ones. Connecting the county with local and regional entities will help grow a regional user base that emphasizes coordination and collaboration. ESRI provides a collaborative environment for connecting with other organizations, allowing for joint projects, easier data sharing, and a stronger group of regional users. We are stronger together after all. Speaking of being stronger together, focusing on learning and enrichment opportunities will allow us to grow as a strong and skilled group of GIS users. GIS technology is an ever-evolving and technical field that requires frequent enrichment opportunities to keep user knowledge up to date. By focusing training on technologies, workflows, analysis, and field methods, San Juan County will benefit by gaining better data quality, improved efficiency, and fully leveraging the technology and systems that are available to us. I encourage each of you to stop by my office so that we may discuss what GIS has to offer San Juan County in much more detail, but I did want to ask if anyone has any questions or comments for me today.
Okay, does anybody have questions, comments?
Madam Chair, I do. Under engagement uses, work closely with Navajo Nation. And I know there was a huge attempt for rural addressing, but it never got to where, you know, an emergency vehicle could go out. People, it's like, oh, they live over the hill and past the mesa. And what are you finding in working with Navajo Nation? What's lacking there?
Well, I don't want to speak for the Navajon Nation themselves. I will say that I think there's maybe a lack of coordination among the folks that are doing the rural addressing project. It seems that there's two to three different projects going on, taking advantage of funding that's available to them. As far as are involved in that goes, it's pretty much minimal. I'm kind of just coordinating with them to make sure that we have accurate data for our county processes. So I've connected with the Community Development Department with the Navajo Nation and am looking forward to connecting with the Division of Transportation as well.
I'm asking that because I live on, used to be Barbados Cito Drive. Then one day, I'm driving to the house, and it says Cloud Drive. And I thought, there's all these street names going up in Shiprock, but nobody has informed us. Maybe I need to visit with you so I can see what Navajo Nation's telling you or who I can go see to clarify that because that affects my voting. I know that if I'm no longer on Barbados Cito Drive and now it's Cloud Drive, I don't know if the county clerk's aware of these changes. And so I'm really concerned about this.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Totacini, this is something we're actively working on specifically for that purpose. During the election season, it was noted that there are road names and addresses in place around the Shiprock Chapter. I've also been notified that that's available on Google Maps, yet we're not getting that data. So we're actively trying to get that data, not only for the Shiprock Chapter area, but some of the other outlying chapter houses. I think because there are so many different people working on the project, it's been hard to kind of dial it down to the one person who we should contact. And it probably means that we should be coordinating with all these different divisions, but we're actively looking, looking into getting that data. And I would love to talk more about that with you.
I'd like you to keep me updated, like what's happening with, in your job and working with Navajo Nation, because I haven't seen any public information on what's happening. Nobody said, by the way, your street name changed. All of a sudden, I'm driving, it's something different. Then I start driving around Shiprock, like I said, and there's street signs. And it's like, how come nobody said, well, you know, that this was going. But I'll meet with you later.
I look forward to that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?
I can see where that's very, very important for emergency situations, for an ambulance to get to a certain house that needs, needs help. I'm interested in seeing how that's going to happen. But I will come into your office to learn how to find stuff.
Yeah, please. I think this county is very unique in how many applications are available to the public. And these are similar applications that are also available to our internal users. So there's a very large amount of data that's out there and available, and I look forward to connecting you with that data.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, if there's not any other questions or discussion, thank you, Mr. Yohi. That's very interesting. So next on the agenda, we have consideration of Town Kirtland, nine-one-one addressing agreement, jurisdictional addressing boundary. Good evening, Mr. Trukey-Tillen.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioners, welcome, new commissioners.
Thank you.
So staff brings for your consideration agreement between San Juan County and the Town of Kirtland for the purpose of addressing for a nine-one-one response. The area beyond the incorporated town limits extends three miles into the San Juan County and Incorporated jurisdiction. This is referred to the Planning and Plating Jurisdiction. Includes that smaller boundary that establishes a jurisdiction who will have addressing authority. This is the smaller boundary that establishes which jurisdiction will have addressing authority has two main functions: to prevent overlapping of addressing, which could cause confusion for emergency responders and impact response times, and to allow for easier transition during annexation. New Mexico statute three dash seven dash eighteen regarding annexation to include streets creates a case for two addressing authorities for a single parcel when such parcel is bounded by a non-annex road on one side and the municipality boundary on the other. The present, the presented agreement with its boundary description and exceptions to the boundary descriptions seeks to clarify the plan for the present and future, ensuring clear and consistent addressing data for a nine-one-one response. Again, addressing's main purpose is to provide response for responders. If you would pull up the map, the next one I did. So this is a map of the actual boundary outline. And if you do have questions, I do have the Community Development Rural Addressing Data Tech here, who actually worked on this project. So it's basically a boundary that says Kirtland, you do Kirtland Streets here, county, you do county road here.
So it's a collaborative process?
Yeah. And then that way, if you're responding to Jordan Street, that's a city street. That's not a county-addressed street. So they know this is within that addressing jurisdiction. It doesn't have Jordan Street and County Road twenty-five thirty-five, such as you're dealing with two different road names. This defines who's going to address in that area, and there's never a crossover, so we don't have that duplicate addressing in confusion.
Sounds like that's very important, considering what can happen while we're here and so.
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Trukey-Tillen? Okay, if not, this is an action item, and I'll need a motion.
Madam Chair, I think the Town of Kirtland has really taken on an initiative, which is wonderful because nine-one-one is critical. And therefore, I'd like to make a motion that the Town of Kirtland nine-nine-one addressing agreement and jurisdictional addressing boundary be approved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, but first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, we'll move on to number four, review of boards and committee appointments for twenty-two five. Mr. Stark?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This is part of the annual review of boards and committees that we bring to the commission. And we normally do this the latter half of January, but knowing that we may only have one meeting, we're going to discuss that in a bit, we wanted to get this to you to start the year off and make sure that we had a complete list of board and committee appointments for you. This is, these boards and committees are ones by which either by agreement or by membership, we're afforded a board seat or multiple board seats. And so that's how this list is derived. And so we reached out to the groups that we have an interest in, and also individually, I reached out to those of you that have served in various capacities before. So we put together a list for your consideration. There was one. There was one area that has changed from years past, a caveat, it's actually related to the next agenda item, but for the San Juan Water Commission appointment, whoever you elected to serve in the primary representative role, we would ask that that individual also serves as the county representative on any ditch boards the county may have an interest in going forward. So we've had a circumstance where which we didn't have a representative, and that's, like I said, related to the next item, but we want to make sure that we do have representation if that comes up, and we think that would be the best way to handle representation is to have the individual who's serving as our representative on the Water Commission to serve on any interest we may have on various ditch boards that we need to participate in, where the county has an interest in that ditch. So with that, I can stand for any questions you might have, and I would ask for you to approve the list as you so desire.
Can additions be made?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gonzalez, yes. If we needed to add, say, an alternate spot, is that what you're suggesting, or did you want to make some changes to the proposal?
You know, I find that committee of ranch and farmlands, or whatever it is, that one where Bonnie Hopkins and Leo Khan, I'd be interested in getting that committee, if possible.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gonzalez, I think they would welcome your participation on that committee. So I don't think that would be a problem at all.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
Farm and Ranch?
Farm and Ranch.
Oh, yeah. Towards the top. And also, if there's anything there here that interests anybody, you can still sit in on the meetings to learn. It just depends on what their bylaws, as far as what's allowed as far as membership. So are there any other questions or discussion about this?
Madam Chair, just a comment, and I'm glad that Commissioner Lanier and Commissioner Gonzalez are going to join MPO and CAG. It would be good to work with both of you on that.
Thank you. Thank you. You teach me a lot.
Okay, any other comments? All right, this is an action item, so I need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the board and committee appointments for 2025.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Totacini.
With the addition of Mr. Gonzalez to the farm.
I'm in line.
Farm and Ranch. All right, done. Second?
I'll second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So now we'll move on to the consideration of resolution number 242548, ratifying appointment of Steve Lanier to represent San Juan County shares at the Farmers Mutual Ditch Meeting on December 16, 2024. Mr. Stark?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So as I mentioned in the previous item, we were approached by a member of the Farmers Mutual Community Ditch that their annual meeting was upcoming, December 16, the day before our final commission meeting of the year, and that it was strongly encouraged that San Juan County have representation at that meeting. We, by right of Riverview Golf Course and the water rights that we have associated with that, you know, we have a 10% interest in that ditch. And so I was asked to forward the name of a representative for us, and so did so after consultation with staff, and ultimately arrived at the conclusion, visiting within, County Commissioner Steve Lanier, that as the primary representative of the Water Commission then, and continuing now, that it would be best for him to serve the county's interests at the December 16 board meeting. So we just wanted to make sure that, since that was done by me, you know, with no time to get that in front of you, you can see the letter that I was asked to forward to the Farmers Mutual Ditch, that's in your packet that was sent off to them, indicating that Mr. Lanier would be our representative. We wanted to come before you and make sure that that action was ratified, and so the legal department drafted up a resolution 24-25-48, so we can have that officially, official action ratified by you. I can stand for any questions you might have.
Madam Chair, there's no conflict, you know, that will arise or anything like that, because I know he likes being part of the Water Commission, so, but there's nothing that can, you know, to prevent him from being, serving on there.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Totacini, I'm not aware of any conflicts that would exist. In this case, you know, personally, Mr. Lanier has no interest in the Farmers Mutual Ditch system, so he was solely representing San Juan County and would continue to do so as our representative on the Water Commission. So, but I can defer to anybody else if Mr. Sawyer has any additional information, since he serves as legal counsel for the Water Commission.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Totacini, I think when a conflict would arise would be if he did have individual shares in the ditch. And so we'll alert him to, that he disclose that interest, and if that's the case, then we'll take appropriate action on a case-by-case basis. I'd assume that the county could probably appoint an alternate in that case to represent us on those ditches if he has an interest that would cause a conflict.
Okay. Madam Chair, with that clarified, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 242548, ratifying appointment of Steve Lanier to represent San Juan County shares at the Farmers Mutual Ditch Meeting on December 16, 2024.
Do I have a second?
If I might, I think it'd be an asset, not a liability, to sharing his experience on both of these positions. I think it'd benefit the Mutual Ditch, and I think it'd benefit the Water Commission also, so I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Second, is there any other discussion or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay.
And I will abstain from that vote.
Okay.
You know this guy, or?
But again, you don't have any interest in that ditch.
No, but I will still abstain.
Okay. And then, now we'll move on to Mr. Sawyer, consideration of Resolution Number 242547.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Open Meetings Act requires that a public body determine annually what notice for a public meeting is reasonable when applied to that body. And we, every year, we pretty much have the same resolution, and it lays out the number of days' notice that's required for different meetings. Since we have some new members on the commission, I'm going to lay out, I'm going to summarize what our resolution says real quick. So the resolution would place meetings on the first and third Tuesdays of each month at 4 o'clock PM. Our resolution states that notice will be given for regular meetings, special meetings, and emergency meetings. Our timelines are the same as those required by statute for those meetings, which is 72 hours for regular and special meetings, and as much notice as possible for an emergency meeting. Our resolution also lists where notice of meetings will be posted, and that all notices shall include an agenda. It describes how closed meetings will be conducted and how they'll be convened. It also states that minutes will be transcribed and available for public inspection, and that meetings will be held in the commission room, which is right here, unless otherwise specified, and that they'll be conducted in accordance with parliamentary procedure. And as you know, we've adopted a resolution that lays that out. We have a modified procedure that we use for commission meetings, which, if you don't have already, we'll get to you. And it also states that members may participate by telephone when it's difficult or impossible to appear in person, and that the county would comply with all health orders and guidance from the Attorney General. And really, this is just a recap of what the statutes say. But just to be clear with the public, we repeat that in our resolution.
Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Sawyer, for clarifying that. And this is done annually, so I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 242547, the open meetings resolution.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. All right, so now we'll move on to number seven, consideration of Resolution Number 242546, canceling and rescheduling certain meetings in calendar year 2025. Mr. Stark?
Yeah, thank you, Mr., or Madam Chair, sorry, and Commissioners. This is another annual item that we bring forth to you after you consider the Open Meetings Act. And given that you've maintained the first and third Tuesday of the month, we were anticipating some potential conflicts, and so we want to bring those to you for consideration now. Helps for staff's purposes, but certainly for citizens, to make sure we give as much notice as possible about these known conflicts. So the first one, I'll just kind of run down the list, you've got it in your packet, and there's a schedule on here as well. We are recommending that the second meeting in January be canceled due to the fact it's may, would conflict with the New Mexico Association of Counties Legislative Conference. So that was the first move. The second move is the move the first meeting in March to the 11th and cancel the second meeting on the 18th, and that's because of the National Association of Counties Conference, which would conflict with the first Tuesday of the month. And I know there's some interest from a couple of you to want to attend that conference. A budget workshop, we normally schedule that the first week in May, and so we're not asking for any cancellations, just a change to the start time to allow for the, you know, longer than normal commission meeting we know we'll have. So we're suggesting that that first meeting in May, on May 6, be moved up to 11:30 AM, start time that would happen as we've historically done in this room. Have the budget workshop, you know, in a table out here in front of the dais here. The next one would be to move the first meeting in June to June 10, so that'd be rescheduled, and then cancel the second meetings. We're trying to space out meetings, and that's why we're recommending moving and canceling some, so that we don't have meetings that fall right next to each other, to avoid any conflicts with the New Mexico Counties Summer Conference, that I know some of you would be attending. So that's the fourth item. The fifth item is that in July, we are required to provide a budget, a final budget to DFA by August 1, and so to allow for as much time as possible for the Finance Department to do that, because it takes a lot of work to get that all compiled and, you know, the end of the year closed. We're suggesting moving that second meeting in July to July 29. And all these have a 4 o'clock start time, with the exception of the budget workshop. And then because of proximity to the first meeting in August, moving to 29, we would suggest canceling that first week in August meeting, so we would just have one meeting on August 19. And then last, the regular local election falls on the first meeting in November, and the state, Secretary of State requires canvassing of the election within six to 10 days after the election. And so the suggestion would be, and we normally would just move that to the following Tuesday, but that actually is Veterans Day, so we'll be closed. And so visited with the clerk's office, and they suggested Monday at 4:00 PM, that would be the sixth day, and so to have our meeting on Monday instead of the Tuesday. So those are the changes that staff's recommending. We can adjust according to your wishes. I can stand for any questions you might have.
Okay. Questions?
Madam Chair, considering the Resolution 242546, canceling, rescheduling certain meetings, I made a motion that we approve these two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any other discussion or questions?
Madam Chair, Mr. Stark, I like the way you, the meeting schedule that you give to the media. That was easier to read, the writing, a little bit harder, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other discussion or questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Stark. Then we'll move on to number eight, consideration of public input for a property tax rebate to benefit low-income taxpayers.
Okay.
Mr. Stark?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. State law 7-2-14.3, the county commission must conduct a public hearing in January of each odd numbered year, which this is such, on the question of whether to adopt an ordinance authorizing a property tax rebate to benefit low-income property taxpayers. The proposed ordinance will authorize an income tax rebate for a percentage of property taxes paid. The taxpayers take advantage of the rebate through a credit on their individual state income tax documents, so it wouldn't, that wouldn't flow through, you know, the Assessor or the Treasurer's office, this would actually be a credit on state income taxes. The county then must reimburse the state of New Mexico for any rebates and the qualifying income levels that are set by statute. And so a sliding scale based on income caps lists that the maximum rate that a taxpayer could receive is $175, or for a couple, it would be $350 per tax return. The exact cost of this potential, if you were to move forward with an ordinance, is unknown, and it's unknown because we don't know how many property tax, or how many property owners in San Juan County would qualify. So we have a list in your packet, and I'll just share this with you, so you know where it's at. But it shows you all of the, this is provided to us by New Mexico Property Tax Division, the number of tax returns in 2021, and I also have 2023 numbers that should be in front of you up here. And so those were the numbers provided to us by them, so it gives you an estimate of how many folks under the income threshold of 24,000, all the way down to zero, would potentially qualify for this rebate if you were to move forward. And so two other counties, sorry, two other counties previously, but Dona Anna recently has put such an ordinance in place, and so the impact financially to those respective counties has averaged, for Santa Fe, 468,000, for Los Alamos, roughly 13,000, and then Dona Anna recently adopted theirs, and I'm going to say it's about $400,000. I don't have it, I think there's a note in here, but.
I think it's in this staff summary.
Yeah, 400, oh, that's Santa Fe.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that's roughly what we're talking about in terms of impact to their respective counties. So with that, the purpose of this item tonight is not to determine, unless, you know, there's feedback to do so from the public, this is really to conduct a public hearing, okay? And so what the state law says is that we have to advertise this in the paper of general circulation, which we've done, and that's in your packet, showing that we did that with Tri-City Record. And then we also had to run radio ads the week prior to, which we've done as well. Mr. Neely was able to schedule those with iHeart Media, and it's very similar to what we did in 2023, when this item was last considered by the county commission. So like I said, this is an every-two-year requirement that we bring this matter to you for consideration, and that you all would open this up for public input at tonight's meeting. And I can stand for any other questions you might have.
So at this point, we'll need to open it up to public comment?
You would.
Okay.
Conduct a public hearing regarding any input from citizens regarding this.
Do we need to go do it separately, have motions, or just open it up?
Madam Chair, I don't believe you need a motion. I think you can just open the public hearing section of it.
Okay, so if there's anyone that would like to make comments related to this subject, I'd ask you to go ahead and come forward to the podium, identify yourself, and tell us your concerns or your input. Okay, Mr. Stark, I don't see anybody coming forward at this time, so it looks like there's no. no public comment at this time, so we'll go ahead and move forward now.
Okay.
All right, is there any other comment or question before somebody makes a motion?
So you think those figures are close, you know, 528,050 to 4 million, the impact that it could have on our account?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Gonzalez, you know, that's taking kind of the, you know, low-end number, it's a worst-case scenario, so if you had everybody that would potentially qualify, that would own property, which I don't think a lot of cases, folks that are in that income level are probably renting, and so, you know, that's why it's hard to determine what the true impact would be financially, but it could be as high as that number. So that's why we just try to provide the spectrum of what you'd be possibly looking at, and I did find my numbers with Dona Anna, it was 371,182 was the impact to them in 2024, Los Alamos in 2024 was 27,815, and in Santa Fe 405,318. So more than likely, it's probably on the lower end, you know, it's a big guess, because we just don't know how many folks would qualify and who would actually follow through with the rebate, so.
So it's a risk, and we would have to pay the state.
Madam Chair, that's correct. This would be a general fund dispersment, and for anybody, if you were to move forward with an ordinance, individuals then could qualify via their income taxes, and then we would reimburse the state after those income tax returns have been filed, usually at the end of the year. So that's why they, state law asks that this process be conducted in January, because you're talking about the potential for that, you know, those tax returns hitting here soon, so that that could be incorporated into this year's process.
And if we were to impose something like this, you've seen a real change in our senses in the last 10 years from 2010 to 2020, so we really don't know futuristically would this could impact our budget and then have to pay out for such an ordinance like this.
Yeah, Madam Chair, given the absence of public input, you know, it'd be staff's suggestion, given some of the other draws that we have on our tax base, you know, we're still challenged economically with some of the economic conditions here with some of our large taxpayers that have left the area, corporate, you know, taxpayers. And then, you know, we have two constitutional amendments that we still don't know the true impact on relative to additional veterans exemptions that will apply to the property tax base. And so I know the assessors, this is working very closely with the state to determine what that would be, they haven't provided guidance as of yet, but that will be another consideration that will eventually hit the bottom line of our tax base, so.
So this could add up to a good amount, given that, if this were to pass, so any other comment or questions? Okay, hearing none, and I'll take a motion. Is there any discussion or questions for Mr. Stark?
Not fully understanding it, but I do understand what can back the state, whatever, but it could impact us significantly, depending on how many people do get this, you know. You know, I'm all for giving low-income people a tax rebate, of course, so not knowing how this is going to affect us, I think I'll let somebody with a little bit of margin for making a motion.
And Madam Chair, if I could, so the purpose of tonight's items is to determine whether or not she'd like staff to move forward with an ordinance based upon the public input that she received, and so that helps with how you would formulate a motion. So we would need some direction on whether or not to move forward with the process of developing an ordinance related to providing such a tax rebate as indicated.
Or not.
Or not, correct.
Okay, so it could be opposed, or it could be moved forward.
Correct.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to institute a property tax rebate to benefit low-income taxpayers. Is that the way the motion?
That would be.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, so that failed for failure of a second, so then do I have a motion to? We probably don't want to table it at this time.
Madam Chair, we're actually required to take action, the board is required to take action on this item during the month of January, so given that we don't have a second meeting, you would need to take action. Tabling would not be recommended, would be in violation of state law.
I'd be inclined, I will second.
You will second to approve? Okay, I have a first and a second. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, let's do a roll call on this. Commissioner McDaniel?
Aye.
Commissioner Totacini?
Yes, for?
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mine's no. Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Okay, so the ayes have it. Okay, so move forward on it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner, we will bring that forth to you at an upcoming meeting for consideration.
Thank you. All right, now we have a report from the county manager.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I feel like I've been cannibalizing the entire meeting tonight, so I'll be brief in my remarks. I just wanted to make sure, obviously with the absence of a second meeting in January for such our two new Commissioners, the legislative session will be convening here, the 60-day session, so there'll be a lot of activity this year. Historically, you see in 60-day sessions, over 1,000-plus bills that are introduced, and a lot to sort through, and of course, you know, fortunately we've got a very qualified and skilled staff, elected officials who want to make sure that the county's interests are being protected in all the matters that are discussed, and we have a software that we have afforded to us by New Mexico Counties, New Mexico Legislative Reports that we use to compile bills that could have a potential impact on San Juan County. I'll be sending that information out to you periodically. You have direct access, I know for the two new Commissioners we need to get that for you, but Steve Brenner will take care of that for you. But yeah, that's coming, and opening day is January 21. Of course, that's the same week as the New Mexico Counties Legislative Conference, the majority of you were attending, and so I just want to make sure that you are all fully aware of the fun and excitement that will be coming our way. We wish our former county commissioner, now Senator Lanier, the best of his new role down there, you know, great job representing us, but yeah, I just want to make sure you're aware that we'll be fully engaged in that as we always are, and make sure that you're provided up-to-date reports. I try to send out, you know, lists of different bills to you all on a fairly weekly basis, and then if any hot topics come up, certainly feel free to forward those to us, and we'll investigate if there's something we don't have identified as something that could potentially impact the county, either positively or negatively, so.
Okay.
That concludes my report. If you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Stark? Thank you, Mr. Stark. All right, now we'll move on to reports from elected officials. Would any of our elected officials like to give any type of report?
Madam Chair, I believe that San Juan County has made history with three women on the commission, and it's going to be a good journey, and I congratulate Sandra Lanier and Terri Fortner for her reelection. And it's awesome. It's, I know out there, things like that are occurring, and I think we'll work well with the two gentlemen here. So we have a good year ahead of us, a lot of challenges, and a lot of new things going to happen, and we'll be at the legislative conference, so we'll get to, you'll get to network and meet other Commissioners there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Totacini, any other reports from elected officials? All right, now we'll move on to department heads, if there's any reports. Mr. Svedra?
Good evening, Madam Chair, County Commissioner. I will be brief, I just wanted to give the commission a quick update. We are in the home stretch of our outdoor recreation master plan. There's currently a survey on our homepage, San Juan County, and the consultants will actually be back in the area next Thursday from 1:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. at the Lenore here in Aztec, that's 200 South Main Avenue. So it's open for stakeholders, we're hoping to have a good turnout to make sure that input is provided for our area, and if you know of anybody that has a great outdoor recreation picture of our landscape, please submit it to myself. That picture actually will be entered into a contest, in fact, that picture may even show up in our outdoor recreation master plan. So that's going to be a document, hopefully we keep around for the next 20 years, so you may be part of history with that picture. The next item, I just wanted to introduce Mr. Adam Ortega. Adam Ortega is the new Safety and Compliance Manager. We went through a thorough recruitment process, and I will turn it over.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, congratulations as well. I am honored to be placed as the Safety and Compliance Manager for San Juan County. I've spent the last 22 years within the United States Army, protecting soldiers on the front lines, and I don't see any difference coming into this position and making sure that I can translate my robust background in operational management, safety and compliance into the county's operations, and making sure that this is a safe place for people to come work and for us to serve the community. So I truly appreciate the honor. It was a thorough process, but I'm happy to be here, and if you have any questions for me, Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'd be happy to answer them now. If not, thank you for the opportunity, and I really appreciate Mr. Stark and the CO's team, HR, and their due diligence of going through this process.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega, and thank you for your service, and welcome. To the county.
Madam Chair, you'll be doing the defensive driving, right?
Yeah.
Mr. McDaniel's and I, we've taken that, and it'd be good for you too.
Yes, I'll be continuing on that from my predecessor, Stuart, so yes.
Can I use your car?
No, we don't have to get in a vehicle, it's all in the screen. But before you can drive a county car, it's good that you have the defensive driving license.
Well, welcome to San Juan County.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega.
I appreciate it.
Okay, are there any other comments from department heads? Go ahead, Megan.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, the moving day is upon us, so I just want to give you guys an update. The Mental Wellness Resource Center is now making the transition formally into the Navigation Center, and we are moving this Thursday over to PMS. So as you might imagine, there's a lot of moving pieces, from the lease to what colors Devin and I choose for the logo, dropping in phone lines and all sorts of things, and it's been really quite the testament, actually, to teamwork between PMS and us and within our own county. So if we have any questions, I'll stand for those now.
Madam Chair, you have a ribbon cutting, right? When was that?
Yes, ma'am, February 13, in the afternoon at 4:00 p.m. is the formal ribbon cutting, so, and that'll be at 1,001 West Broadway.
Thank you for all your work to coordinate this, it's been going on for a while to make this happen, so I'm excited about seeing what the next steps are and how it helps our community, so thank you, Megan.
That'd be great. All right, thank you.
Are there any other comments from department heads? Okay, seeing none, then at this time, we'll take comments or input from the general public. Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes, and to subjects that the commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. So if there's any comments, if you'll step up to the podium and give your name, and we'll give you three minutes to let us know what you'd like us to know. I don't see any, so at this time, I appreciate everybody's hard work, and so it looks like we're going to go into closed session, so I'll.
Yep, I move that we go into closed executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property rights pursuant to Section 10-15-1 H8. Continuing reading the rest of it. The, one, the purchase of real property adjacent to the sheriff's office in Aztec, New Mexico, and, number two, the granting of easements to clear networks, fiber internet across San Juan County property at McGee Park.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, thank you. Okay, thinking. All right, so we're returning now from closed session. And the matters discussed in the closed session were limited to the specific specified in the motion for closure. Do I have a motion to go back into open session?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Is that a aye in favor?
Oh, the aye was in favor.
That's okay, okay. There's no opposition, some motion carries. Thank you. All right, so.
We have a new business item, but we need to get that off. Number nine, if you want to borrow. Yes.
All right, so number nine, consideration of resolution number 242550 approving the purchase of real estate adjacent to San Juan County Sheriff's Office. So do I have a motion?
Well, would you like me to present it?
Oh, well, yeah, I guess.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. So the sub-developer who is developing a subdivision next to the sheriff's office has agreed to sell approximately 6.78 acres of land adjacent to the San Juan County Sheriff's Office in Aztec to the county for the appraised price of $34,000 per acre, which would be $230,520 total. To complete the purchase, the title company requires a resolution approving the purchase and naming the county officers authorized to execute required documents. Staff request that county manager Mike Stark be authorized to sign purchase documents on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners. And I thought I'd also note that on the staff summary for the public, it mentions the Cleo B. Brimhall Living Trust, but that's incorrect. So it's a sub-developer, Mr. Piero. Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion?
I will make the motion of resolution number 242550 approving the purchase of real estate adjacent to the San Juan County Sheriff's Office.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So then we'll move on to number 10, consideration to approve the granting of easements at McGee Park to Clear Networks LLC. Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you. Clear Networks LLC, which is a fiber internet company from Montrose, Colorado, has approached the county seeking easements to install and maintain fiber optic cables to provide internet service to Sunray Park and Casino, who is our tenant at McGee Park. Proposed payment for the easements is minimal in monetary terms, but the installation of the fiber optic cable is expected to benefit the county and its tenant by providing superior internet service. If the board gives approval, the legal department will negotiate acceptable easements with Clear Networks. So staff request that county manager Mike Stark be given authority to sign documents on behalf of the board to complete the granting of the easements.
Okay, are there any questions or comments for Mr. Sawyer?
Madam Chair, in consideration to approve the granting of the easement from McGee Park to Clear Works LLC, I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, so is that it? Okay, so we're going to adjourn.